... forum for the County Board of Supervisors, District Three. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County and the Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission. I'm Paula Lee, a member of the League of Women Voters, and I'll be the moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization of women and men. We work at all levels of government, national, state, and local, to encourage informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose political candidates or parties. And although we do not support or oppose candidates, we do take positions. We are a political organization. Our positions are taken after careful study, and we take positions on ballot measures and legislation at all levels of government with our advocacy arm. You can find our positions on our website. If you're interested in public policy, or you would just like to volunteer to help us, we welcome you. We'd love to have you join us. Today's format will be as follows. Each of these candidates for District Three Supervisor will have up to two minutes for an opening statement, and then each candidate will ask each other a question. They'll have two minutes to answer questions, and then a one-minute closing statement. The timer today is League volunteer Carol Enns. And candidates, she's sitting right there in front of you. And she has the timing paddles that will tell you when you have 30 seconds to go and the stop sign. So let's begin. And we'll begin with an opening statement from Greg Fishman.
Thank you, Paula, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to express my views and to reach out to voters. This is an important race. I guess I want to start by telling you a little bit about who I am and why I'm running. I've lived in Sacramento County for about 40 years. I raised my family here. My wife and I have lived in our home in the Arden area for about 20 years now. And I love this town. I love this community. I've always worked to make it a little bit better. I have a long history of serving my community on my park and rec board locally for several years. I run a neighborhood tree planting program in coordination with the Sacramento Tree Foundation. We've planted more than 2,000 trees over the last 20 years. I'm really proud of that, and it's making a difference in our neighborhood. I'm also currently serving on the SMUD Board of Directors, and I'm proud of the role that SMUD plays in our community. We're keeping your rates down, about 35% lower than other utilities. We're keeping your lights on, even when other utilities locally have struggled with that recently. And we're also doing the right thing by the environment. We've taken an aggressive approach to reducing our carbon input and also making it easier for you, our customers, to reduce your carbon input so we can really start making a difference, hopefully locally, with climate change. I want to take that same common sense approach to service on this board, on this dais, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. I also served for six years with the California State Association of Counties. So I have deep understanding of direct county government, what county government does, how they do it, county policy. I've worked side by side with some of the best county supervisors around the state, from both parties, on programs and projects that really make a difference and really work for people. And that's the kind of experience that I want to take to the Board of Supervisors. So I have experience. I have dedication to the community. My name is Greg Fishman. I'd be happy to serve as your member on the Board of Supervisors, and I hope I can earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And now, an opening statement from Rich Desmond.
Thank you, and thank you also to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum today. We had one of these in the primary, and there were five of us, and now there are two of us, and obviously doing it under different circumstances. And I appreciate you adapting and accommodating us and giving us a chance to talk to the voters once again. I'm Rich Desmond. I'm born and raised in District Three in Carmichael. I'm the youngest of nine kids. My family, I'm a fifth-generation Sacramento County resident, been heavily involved in the community my entire life. I love this community like Greg, and I want to serve this community as your next supervisor. I was someone who, like a lot of people in this district, became more and more frustrated at local government's inability to deal with the crises that we are facing, our homelessness crisis, our aging commercial corridors that are blighted, the condition of our roadways in the county, and also a feeling that Sacramento County government is not responsive or engaged in the problems that we have in District Three. So I look forward to talking about these issues. One thing I want to address is, you know, I'm an independent, and that's a distinction between me and my opponent. I have support from Democrats and Republicans. I'm very proud of that. One thing that's happened in this race has become an increasingly partisan race, and my opponent, Greg, who I think is a good guy, has become increasingly negative towards me, he and his campaign supporters. They've attacked me because of people who have contributed to my campaign. He's attacked me because of my law enforcement experience. I mean, I understand that. I understand that he feels this race is slipping away from him, but I hope we can walk out of this with our heads held high, and I really hope we can focus on the issues in the last two weeks of this campaign, which is why I'm happy to be here today to have this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Now we'll move on to the questions, and we thought we'd mix it up a bit by having the candidates ask one question of each other. So, Rich, do you have a question for Greg Fishman?
Yes, I do. Greg, I'll look at you and I ask the question. Do you support defunding local law enforcement or diverting resources from local law enforcement to other programs?
So it's imperative that we maintain a sheriff's department that is responsive, that is effective and is transparent, and that reflects the community that it serves, that it has the resources to do the job we want it to do. If you ever have to call 911, and I hope you do not, but if you ever do, you want the sheriff's department to show up and to be there when you need them. And I absolutely support maintaining a sheriff's department that has the ability to do that. Having said that, even Sheriff Scott Jones has acknowledged in these very chambers that we need to have a discussion about who should really be responding to noncriminal activity that requires some attention from the government: homelessness, when there's no crimes involved; mental illness, when there's no crime involved. We have deputies responding to that now. That takes them away from the community and serving the community where they're actually preventing other crimes or responding to other calls. So we need to have a conversation about how we can make those calls happen better, how we can respond more effectively to those social issues that don't necessarily require law enforcement. I'm willing to have that conversation. Sheriff Scott Jones says he's willing to have that conversation. I'm surprised, frankly, that my opponent, Rich, does not seem to be willing to have that conversation. So I absolutely am in favor of maintaining a strong sheriff's department that is responsive and reflects the community that it serves, but we also need to make sure that we're responding effectively and appropriately to social issues that do not involve criminal activity.
I think you didn't answer the question. I mean, inside Sacramento article, you mentioned that you support diverting resources away from the sheriff's department to other programs. In a Sacramento Bee video piece, you stated that in front of the camera, that you want to divert sheriff's resources to other programs. So I think we need a straightforward answer from you, Greg.
Rich, I think I gave you a straightforward answer. I think we need to have a good conversation about how we respond to social issues that do not involve criminal activity. That is my answer. And if you're not willing to have that discussion, I think that's a fault that you need to correct.
Well, Greg, I've actually, because of my law enforcement background and reforming law enforcement, I've been involved in those discussions directly at the state legislature, worked on legislation.
So you are interested in having a discussion about...
Oh, to have a collaborative model, but they are not mutually exclusive things.
Yeah, okay, so then we're in agreement on this.
I will not take resources away from local law enforcement. We can supplement law enforcement with other collaborative models.
Candidates, one of the things that we didn't add into the format here was rebuttals. I think they're extremely interesting, and I let you go a little bit on those because, you know, it's good to have back and forth. But we'll only be doing that for your questions, okay? Because otherwise, we won't have time for the questions that came from voters. So Greg Fishman, do you have a question?
I do. I do. Rich, "Take Back California." An anti-immigrant organization that's dedicated to electing conservative office holders donated $1,000 directly to your campaign. Given that, if you're elected, what is your position on the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department cooperating with ICE agents in the jail?
So first, I'll respond to the first thing, and I'm glad you asked that question because I think it illustrates a fundamental difference between us. I have support from Democrats and Republicans. I have, and I'm very proud of that, because they recognize that we should not let partisan politics impact what we do at the local level. And I think that's what's hard for Greg and his handlers in the city of Sacramento and the party to wrap their minds around, that some people truly are independent. I've been a Republican and a Democrat at various times in my life, but I feel like, as an independent, you can work with, and need to work, with both sides of the aisle to accomplish things. Now, with respect to ICE, I worked on legislation at the state Capitol, you may be familiar with it, SB 54, that was sponsored by the Pro Tem, Senator Kevin DeLeón. I actually worked on that legislation. I worked on legislation that would limit the amount of information law enforcement can share on immigrants in the state of California. So I have a great relationship with advocates in the immigrant community, and I will absolutely work on those issues to make sure ICE is not overstepping their bounds and not being where they don't need to be. But you also need to keep in mind, the federal government has some very explicit jurisdictional authority, and there's only so much California government and certainly local government can do to prevent that. But if someone is a violent or serious criminal, then I support the sheriff sharing information with ICE so ICE can come, maybe get this person, and deport them. And I think that's more than reasonable.
No rebuttal.
No rebuttal. Okay. Let's move on to other questions. This is a big one for, over the years, in both the city and the county, and we will begin with Rich Desmond. What ideas do you have to solve the homelessness in the county?
Such a big issue. We could probably spend the entire forum talking about this issue. This is the moral issue of our time, and how we deal with this issue is our legacy to our children and future generations. I just met yesterday with a group called Hope for Sacramento. It's a group that is looking at modeling a program here in Sacramento like Haven for Hope in San Antonio. And it's a model where folks experiencing homelessness come in and are triaged and provided the resources they need to be able to turn their life around, be able to deal with their addiction or mental illness issues, and get back on their feet. I think that's what we need to be doing. We need to be looking at models throughout the county that work. Our homelessness crisis is an incredibly complex crisis, and it has multiple causes. Affordable housing is a huge cause of that. We need more affordable housing. We need more shelters of different types and sizes throughout Sacramento County so people do not have to sleep unsheltered in public places or out on the streets. But we are kidding ourselves if we don't realize that this is an addiction and a mental illness crisis, and that is where we need to direct more resources and more legal tools, frankly, to get folks into treatment for mental illness and addiction. I support things like Laura's Law. It's a conservatorship program that gets people suffering mental illness into treatment with court supervision, but it is certainly not a panacea. We need to exploring a lot more avenues, legal avenues, facilities, and resources to get people the help they need, and that's what I'll be focusing on. We cannot handle this crisis simply as an affordable housing crisis. We need to handle it in a much more multifaceted way. And if programs are not working, we need to pivot and try something else and get to start doing something that works. Thank you.
Greg Fishman?
Thank you. Yeah, this is clearly a question that we need to have a robust discussion about, far more than two minutes each on this, but we absolutely have to collaborate more. The city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento need to work together closely on homelessness, but it's not just the city of Sacramento, it's the city of Rancho Cordova, El Grove, Citrus Heights, Folsom. We all need to be collaborative on this issue and make sure that we're working together and pulling in the same direction rather than working at odds or duplicating effort. There's something called the continuum of care. This is an umbrella that's supposed to provide seamless services for people who are homeless, taking them off the streets, moving them through the system into a more and more independent living situation, depending on their own abilities and where they are. Obviously, drug and alcohol abuse is an issue. Mental health is a big issue, and we need more bed spaces for treatment for both of those social ills. I am an advocate for using the Downtown Streets Team. This is an effective program that has been working certainly in downtown Sacramento, but many other cities and counties around the state. These are outreach people. They do some of that triage. They build trust. Many of them are formerly homeless themselves, and we're not using them as effectively or as widely as we could, and I think we should look at having a county contract with the Downtown Streets Team. Sacramento Steps Forward is the organization that actually runs the continuum of care. Even they recognize that there are gaps in that continuum. There's holes that people can fall through. We need to look at this strategically and see how can the county help patch those holes in the continuum of care so that, once people get in the system, we move them through seamlessly. We also need to look at keeping people in their homes now. So many people are at risk, and the city and the county are collaborating now on a rental assistance program. I think that's great. I think we need to expand it and do more because the money for that program is going to run out quickly. So there's always more that can be done, but it's that collaborative nature that's going to help.
As you said, this requires more than a two-minute answer, but in addition to homelessness, affordable housing. How will we actually get affordable housing? Greg Fishman?
Thank you. When we want, there are several things that I think a housing project should include. If we really want it to be the kind of housing that we need, certainly in District Three, but around the county, I envision creating a system of different attributes, positive attributes for a housing development, a given apartment complex or project. For each of those attributes, the developer then qualifies for some additional incentives. And so those positive attributes, to me, include a lot of things, but mainly among them, some actual affordable housing. So if we're going to build a 50-unit apartment complex, and we're going to ask that developer to set aside, say, 10 of those for affordable housing, we can give that developer some additional benefits that help make up the bottom line for that loss of revenue. We need to make it attractive for the developers to build the kind of housing that we want. We can be punitive and say, "You must do this," but I think what we really need to do is use the carrot, not the stick, and say, "These are the incentives we're going to provide for you to do the right thing." So that can include additional density. So instead of 50 units, you get to build 65, and then 15 of those are dedicated to affordable housing. We can give you priority in your permitting and in inspections. We can maybe reduce or finance some of the impact fees for you. The impact fees are important. They help reduce the impact on the community for things like water and sewer systems, schools, and other infrastructure. That's important, but we're not looking at the big picture and saying, "What is the impact of not getting this project built?" So let's look at reducing impact fees. Maybe the county can finance impact fees, and maybe in some cases, we can do away with them altogether. We need to provide developers the right incentives to build the kind of housing we need in District Three and elsewhere in the county, and I think we can do it. We need to streamline the process. We need to make it attractive to build the kind of housing projects that we want and that we need, and we can do this.
Thank you, Rich Desmond.
Thank you, yes. And Greg and I have a lot of the same ideas actually on this issue. One thing I want to mention is that when this campaign started, I spent an awful lot of time meeting with infill developers, business owners, residents, community groups, because I think the most important thing is to understand the communities that we're trying to serve. First of all, this District Three is a very, very diverse community. It goes Fair Oaks in the east, Arden Arcade, Carmichael, Foothill Farms, and North Highlands. Some of these areas already have a lot of affordable housing, so we have to first make sure that wherever we are trying to attract and lure more affordable and low-income housing projects, that it's not overburdening one community over others. We need to focus on the impact fees, incentivizing more density. These are things that are already out there, that already exist, but one of the biggest issues I hear from the community, development community, is county government. It has become hostile towards development, by and large, in the county, and that's something we need to change. We need to have a cultural shift within the county of Sacramento to make sure these developers or people who would come invest and build affordable housing projects are going to be met with a positive reception from the county. Something that I am very proud of, my experience in the California Highway Patrol as the legislative liaison, I worked in the transportation world with Caltrans, DMV, and the CHP, working with private industry to making sure the bureaucracy is more friendly to business. They set clear expectations. There aren't redundancies. There aren't delays that are unnecessary. It's not necessarily the fees and expenses that are killing a lot of these projects, it's the delay and the uncertainty and the bureaucracy in the county of Sacramento. So that is something I will be really focused on changing, and also finding the right project, attracting developers to maybe do a mixed-use project where there's retail and housing, and to do larger multifamily housing along commercial corridors where folks have access to transit. That's where we need to be focusing our efforts.
Rich Desmond, what can be done to help struggling businesses in District Three?
A lot. You know, the other thing I've spent a lot of time doing is meeting with business owners. I participate in business watches, which are hosted by the community prosecutors and Office of Economic Development in the county throughout this district, to understand what the needs are of small business owners in the county. And my answer to my last question, I referenced some of the bureaucratic delays. On the business side of things, if you're a business owner in Sacramento County, it's inhospitable oftentimes to deal with county staff. So the first thing we needed to do is, again, just like on the housing issue, we need to make Sacramento County more of a partner with small businesses. Before COVID-19 hit, small businesses were already struggling for a number of reasons, not only the delays at the county level and the regulatory burdens placed on a lot of businesses in the state of California, but also the homelessness crisis. This is why, you know, when we have that discussion about homelessness, it could probably take up this entire forum. That is a crisis that is horrible for the person experiencing homelessness. It is difficult for neighborhoods, and it is very, very difficult for a lot of small business owners. Imagine how difficult it is to attract customers to come into your business and patronize your establishment if you have homeless encampments right out in front of the business or ongoing issues with graffiti and vandalism next to your business. Our small business owners are really, really struggling from our homelessness crisis. So the way we need to help small businesses is, number one, when we get resources from the federal government, like the CARES Act funding, we need to make sure business has a seat at the table so we can understand how we can help them, how we can help them with their PPE, how we can make sure they set up their businesses to operate safely with customers in this coronavirus world. And also, when it comes to some of our other societal problems, like our roadways, our homelessness crisis, and other things, partner with business to resolve and improve these problems so that improves the climate and people can be more successful and thrive in their small business endeavors, which is what creates strong communities.
Greg Fishman, struggling businesses in District Three.
So I'd like to, first of all, mention that my parents started a small business back in the early '60s. My father had been a chicken rancher for all of his life, and the bottom fell out of that market, and they started a small janitorial supply company in the granary of the chicken farm that I grew up on, and eventually moved into larger quarters. I worked in that small business in the warehouse and driving delivery vans, and I saw them struggling to pay bills as a new and struggling business. You know, it can be difficult, so I think I have a little bit of understanding of what that's like. For our struggling businesses here, there's some things we need to do in the short term. First of all, we need to make it explicit that it's okay for them to move outside if that's part of what they can do until we can fully open up. Now, a lot of businesses have done that. I don't think there's been a whole lot of problem about it, but we need to make it explicit that, yes, you can take up some sidewalk space or some parking lot space. You can set up some easy-ups or pop-ups and shelters if your business allows that. But look, we're also getting into the winter time, and that's going to be a little bit more difficult. We need to make sure that we're delivering consistent rules for the small business community. Now, things are going to change. As we continue to drive down the COVID-19 cases, we're going to be able to expand a little bit more. What we don't want to do is have the impact of where we open things up and then have to shut them down again. So we need to be very cautious, very careful about how we open up, and once we do, let's try to stay that way as much as possible and then improve. So that's really important, consistent rules. And finally, mixed-use development is really a key to this. When we have people who are living near the businesses that they want to patronize, we have people living near the businesses where they're going to work, these things work together, and they can help revitalize some of those aging corridors that are so endemic in District Three and elsewhere around the county. So there's a lot that can be done in the short term. The long term is going to be dependent on getting a vaccine and making sure that we can disseminate that vaccine quickly and effectively to the whole county, everybody, not just those that have health insurance and their own doctors.
Thank you. Rich Desmond, another hot topic is climate. What should go into a county climate action plan, the one that's currently being discussed?
And yes, it's being discussed, and it hasn't been updated in many, many years, which to me is a failure of county government not to have updated the climate action plan. There are several components to it. One, when it comes to construction in Sacramento County, that we are building to the highest standards of carbon neutrality. Another is in the fleet in Sacramento County to make sure we have an all-electric fleet that, again, is carbon neutral. The thing that's also important, though, is that Sacramento County and its climate action plan, it's important to keep in mind that the climate action plan is a directive that comes from the state of California. By and large, the state of California sets what the goals are for counties and local municipalities to meet local climate action plans, and that's where the direction has to come. I will be working very closely with county staff, with stakeholders, and elected officials at the state level to make sure Sacramento County's climate action plan is both updated and that it reflects not only the bare minimum of what we need to accomplish at the state level, but also to make sure Sacramento County leads the way when it comes to climate action, carbon neutrality, because climate change is an existential threat to all of us, and we have a moral obligation to make sure that we meet our climate action goals, but also keep in mind, and I think it's important always to keep this in mind, we have to involve the business community in the discussion because, as the county carries out its own local climate action plan, we need to make sure we don't put unnecessary burdens in the way of businesses and development, affordable housing, low-income housing, development in Sacramento County. Thank you.
Greg Fishman?
Thank you. This is a great question. Because the county is in the middle of revitalizing its climate action plan for the first time in eight years, the existing plan is largely inward-focused. It looks at how the county can reduce its own carbon footprint. That's great. The technology has changed, so we need to look at how that can be expanded internally to Sacramento County. It has never looked outside, and we need to make sure that the new climate action plan includes helping our citizens, the people that we serve, reduce their carbon footprints. And so that includes things like electrification of transportation. SMUD is currently involved in a large-scale effort to increase the use of electric vehicles in Sacramento County and throughout the region. Sacramento County specifically has to dovetail with that effort. We need to look at electrifying buildings more as well, and I would support a plan to require buildings, homes, to be all-electric after a certain number of years. The city of Sacramento has enacted such an ordinance with the support of the business community and the building community. We can do the same thing in Sacramento County and help reduce our carbon footprint. The carbon plan also, the climate action plan also has to dovetail with the city's, I'm sorry, with the county's new housing plan. There's also a state requirement for affordable housing and how many new housing units will be built. These two things cannot exist in a vacuum. They have to dovetail. And so the county staffs working on these two separate plans, we have to make sure that they're working together to have those plans work together to dovetail so that we do get the kind of housing built that we need, but that we also get the carbon reduction that we need to meet state law and to meet the imperative of a change in climate. I'm really proud of SMUD's action on climate change. We've declared a climate emergency. I, as a member of the board, voted for that. We've urged our staff to be even more aggressive in reducing our own carbon output and helping our citizens do the same thing. We need to bring that same kind of urgency to the table for Sacramento County, and that's what I intend to do as a member of the Board of Supervisors.
Next question, we begin with you, Greg. This is a hot topic in the county. How will you hold the Sacramento County Sheriff accountable?
So the sheriff is an elected official in and of himself, and the board does have some oversight over his and his department's activities, but in the long run, I think we need to do three things. The board just approved a budget to approve body cams for sheriff's deputies, and they're going to be moving forward on purchasing those and purchasing the system that records the data. I think that's a great first step. We need to also make sure that the policy surrounding the use of those body cams is effective, that it's open, that it's accessible to people, that they actually have to turn them on and leave them on. So we need to have an effective body cam policy to go with the purchase of the equipment that makes that possible. That's item number one. We need to change when the sheriff's election is held, and I fully support moving the sheriffs and the district attorneys' election to on-years during presidential elections, where we have more voter interest, we have more people voting, we have more attention paid to the election. we have more people voting, we have more attention paid to the election, and I absolutely think that is an imperative need for Sacramento County, to move the sheriff's and DA's elections into presidential election years. And finally, you know, we need to have a citizens' review board that takes a look at critical incidents. But listen, I understand that being a police officer, a sheriff's deputy, is a difficult job, and you're required to make split-second decisions in the dark of night, in the rain, and it's not easy to then have people who have maybe not had that same experience come back and judge you with 2020 hindsight. So to me, the citizens' review board has to also be the liaison to the community, to open up those channels of communication. Maybe we prevent some of those critical incidents from happening, but we also get better policing, we have a better community, we have more communication, more collaboration between the communities that the sheriff's office serves and the deputies who are serving the community. One final thing, I think we should provide an incentive, a financial incentive for sheriff's deputies to live in Sacramento County. Not necessarily exactly where they're serving, but to have them living in the Sacramento County, which most of them currently do not, I think would help that relationship.
Rich Desmond?
Thank you. As someone who was in the California Highway Patrol for 24 years, public safety is something that's incredibly important to me. But I mentioned at the beginning of this forum today that I spent about four years of my career in the Highway Patrol as the legislative liaison over at the state capitol. And in that role, I worked with Democrats, Republicans, law enforcement, labor organizations, civil rights leaders, the governor's administration, on real reform, meaningful reform policy in the state of California, whether that's training, that mandates officers get crisis intervention team training for when they encounter someone with a mental illness, or whether that is a bill by Dr. Shirley Weber, AB 953, that required comprehensive demographic data collection. I have been there at the table, helping develop and craft this kind of public policy with folks on both sides of the aisle. I'm very proud of this work I've done. That is experience and leadership I will bring with me to the Board of Supervisors. There's some things that the sheriff has done over the last few years, and he and I have actually had this discussion. I disagree with him on how he's handled a few things. I do think it's important to keep in mind that the sheriff is a directly elected official, and I, for one, prefer that over being in the city, where you're one step removed from who the chief law enforcement officer is. So I think that's ultimately a good thing. The ultimate accountability measure is the voters, who can vote someone out of office or vote someone new into office. But having said that, there are several things that I agree with Greg. The body-worn camera policy is a very good step in the right direction towards transparency. There actually is already state law that dictates what some of the minimum standards are with body-worn camera policies, but I look forward to working with the sheriff and the Deputy Sheriffs Association on crafting a much more state-of-the-art and best-practices policy. The other important thing that just occurred is the board voted unanimously to improve a new inspector general in Sacramento County, and that inspector general MOU has provisions that would prevent a recurrence of what happened a few years ago between Scott Jones and Rick Brazil. I also believe that there have been some great legislation in the past few years, or this year in the legislature, one, that requires outside investigation by the attorney general's office whenever someone, an unarmed suspect, is shot. That will create more accountability, I think, build public trust between the sheriff's department and the public it serves. Thank you.
Thank you. And we begin the next question with you as well. What will you do to protect Sacramento County's open space? And just to combine another question here, in case we run out of time, do you have any thoughts, in addition to the county's open space, about transportation planning?
I think, you know, for me, as someone who's born and raised here and has used the open spaces in Sacramento County, this is a question that is near and dear to my heart, because I've seen a lot of these places where I used to play as a kid, where I used to ride my bike, or where I used to go to kind of get away from the city. Now they've become paved over. I really like programs like, or models like, the collaborative models like the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. And what this was, was a model where landowners came together with federal regulators, state regulators, local regulators, and developers all came and sat at the table to identify which areas do we want to preserve, where is the critical habitat, and let's set these areas aside, and in return, let's develop more of an expedited process for getting permits and approvals for development in these areas that are not in sensitive areas. I think that is the exact kind of model that I want to pursue and replicate in Sacramento County, to make sure we preserve critical open space. But I also don't want to neglect the open space in our backyard, certainly in District 3. When you talk open space, a lot of people, the first thing they think about in District 3 is our American River Parkway. That is the crown jewel of Sacramento County. Actually, it's one of, I think, the best open-space amenities in any urban area in the country. I spent almost my entire life on that Parkway. It was practically my backyard. I still, one time I used to jog on the bike trail. Now I walk more on the bike trail and cycle on the bike trail. But it is a shame what is happening on the American River Parkway. We are not doing a good job of protecting this vital resource. It is becoming severely burdened with our homelessness crisis, which, again, it is a crisis that affects, as I mentioned, small businesses, our American River Parkway, so many different things. So I want to make sure we pay attention to the Parkway and its needs. I've been out there regularly, picking up trash along the Parkway, working with the American River Parkway Foundation to protect that amenity too, so we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
And Greg Fishman?
Thank you. You know, we're talking about some of the issues here, housing and homelessness, transportation, land use and protecting open space. These are all interrelated, oh, and climate change. These are all interrelated issues, and so we have to start looking at them from a holistic standpoint. And when we talk about protecting open space, we have to, it's the same conversation as how do we provide more affordable housing and infill development. It's providing incentives to people to build the kind of projects in the places where we want them to be. So this is also kind of a carrot or a stick thing. We can apply the stick, and I think that that's appropriate in some places. We have the urban services boundary. I think that's an important piece of work that we need to abide by. We need to look at that very, very carefully. Obviously, we need to protect the American River Parkway, but we also need to start looking at how do we provide incentives for builders and development to happen so that we get the kind of projects we want in the places where we want them. And so again, I'm going to go back to what I was talking about earlier, with providing those incentives. So we talked about providing the incentives for low-income housing, but we can also provide the same kinds of incentives for people that are talking about doing infill development, on transit-oriented development, and mixed-use development. All of those are positive attributes that we need that will help us build the housing stock that we so desperately need without doing the sprawl that then starts encroaching on the open space. So let's provide those incentives. We get the housing that we need, we get infill development, we provide people transit options. They don't have to get in a car. They don't have to create more pollution and carbon. So when we start looking at these issues, not just as a single issue, but as a holistic set of problems that the county needs to address and our region needs to address, we can come to some solutions that are not just single solutions to one issue. They're the solution for many of our problems. It's not easy, and I don't mean to say that. And you can't please all the people all the time, and I would never say that either. But we can start looking at these problems and how they are interrelated and coming up with solutions that address more than one problem at the same time.
Thank you. Greg Fishman, how should we allocate future federal stimulus dollars that come to the county, and how would you have handled the CARES Act funding?
Well, the CARES Act funding issue was, I'm sorry, it was a travesty the way it was handled. The concept of swapping highly restricted CARES Act funds into an existing county budget and then having the same amount of money taken out and put into the general fund that is less restrictive and more flexible, that's not necessarily a bad concept, but the way that happened was abhorrent. It was obscure. Nobody understood what was happening. The way it was communicated was terrible, and I think even the Board of Supervisors here, you saw some people very, very upset about how that was rolled out, especially because somehow, in that process of divvying up and allocating funds that were meant for COVID-19, the county health department did not get the funding it needed for several months to expand testing and contact tracing. And that was happening at a time when the disease was expanding in our county. Finally, they allocated $45 million to the county health department and with another 45 to come. And I think that that's, you know, that's a step in the right direction. Additional stimulus funds, we have to look at keeping people in their homes, so I'm looking for sure at rental assistance paid directly to landlords so they can pay their mortgages and keep people in their homes and get that money churning through the economy. We absolutely have to do a program for small businesses that helps them reopen, stay open, and expand as we beat the disease and allow more fully reopening of our economy. We have to be there with small business support. But so to me, it's making sure that we have the money in the health department to do what it needs to do to keep us safe and healthy and keep the disease on a downward track in Sacramento County. We need to make sure that we're keeping people in their homes and dealing with the homelessness issue as well, and then also, small business and getting people back to work, opening up our economy again, opening up our schools, and eventually, hopefully, with a vaccine that is fully disseminated to everybody, not just those who have doctors and health insurance, we can get back on track.
Rich Desmond?
Thank you. It was, I agree with Greg. It was an abomination how Sacramento County handled the CARES Act funding. I think it's important first to keep in mind that Sacramento County was not in the same situation as the city. The county did not have a big pot of money to rely on to backfill municipal services that were, by and large, losing a lot of the funding sources because of the drop-off in taxes in the county. So a lot of that money needed to be used to provide basic municipal services in the county, but the optics of doing that swap to preserve general fund flexibility, doing it with the sheriff's department, to me, was completely tone-deaf. And I blame the supervisors. The supervisors established the structure for how they would decide where that money goes. The supervisors should have maintained more direct involvement, and they should have insisted that other groups have a seat at the table, nonprofit organizations, homeless advocacy organizations, business organizations. I heard from many of the business groups who have endorsed me in the SAC Metro Chamber and region business and others, who said they tried to reach out to the county and were not given a seat at the table with how this money is going to be spent. And so I firmly place this at the feet of the board for abdicating their oversight role. So with those groups at the table, we will be able to make sure that money goes where it's needed the most, whether it's to help working families stay in their home, like Greg said, for more rental assistance, or for small business owners to make sure they have funds they need to keep their doors open, maybe to fund more PPE to move their operations outside. But we need to include them in the discussion. My hope is that after this crazy election time, there will be more Corona CARES Act relief money coming, and I will, for one, make sure that Sacramento County does a much better job of where we spend those dollars to make sure they're getting to, really meeting the needs of people and businesses in this county.
Thank you. And now it's time for closing statements, and we'll begin with Rich Desmond.
Thank you. I thank you again to the league. It's a pleasure to be here, and this is a very important race. You've seen, probably seen, a lot written about this race, how this has the potential to really flip the Board of Supervisors and change the balance. I think what this seat has the potential to do is really upset the balance. I think at the local level, nonpartisan seats are deemed nonpartisan for a reason. We should not allow partisan politics to come in and dictate what policies we decide upon at the local level. With me, you get someone who is independent, has support from Republicans, Democrats, everybody in between, and who will be working with everyone in this community, for everyone in this community, and making sure that we take approaches that are the best for the community, whether that's Fair Oaks, or Arden Arcade, or North Highlands. But we're not going to be taking approaches or making policy decisions that are driven by partisan political agendas. And that's the promise I can make to you, and that is what people want. They are tired of partisan politics that are dividing us at the national level, and at the local level, we should reject it. And I ask for your vote, and thank you very much for letting me be part of the discussion today.
That one minute goes fast.
Yes, it does.
Greg Fishman, you can give him a little extra.
Thank you. Again, thank you to the league for putting this on. It is important that voters get a chance to see us and hear us and make their decisions based on what we're saying instead of what we're saying about each other. My name is Greg Fishman. I'm on the SMUD board right now, and I'm really proud of the role that SMUD plays in this community. I'm really proud that SMUD's board is collaborative, that we work well with other elected officials in the city, in county, and not just the city of Sacramento, but elsewhere around this region. We do have a collaborative nature, and SMUD is one of the most well-respected and well-run organizations, government organizations, in the region. So I'm going to take that kind of leadership and apply it here to Sacramento County. I'm also proud of the fact that I worked for six years for the California State Association of Counties, directly in county government, on county policy. I worked with county supervisors on projects and programs that really work, that are effective, and that make a difference for their communities. And that's the kind of difference I want to make in this community for you. So again, my name is Greg Fishman. I'm running for Sacramento County Supervisor. I have a history of service in the community, service on elected boards, and direct county experience, and I hope that that earns your vote.
Thank you both. This concludes our forum, and I really want to thank both the candidates, Rich Desmond and Greg Fishman, for the forum, being here to inform voters in District 3. Also want to thank RTimer, Carol Enns, and the folks here at Sacramento Metro Cable Commission, production manager, Kristen Riggs, and her team, including Andrea, floor director. And now I have some messages for Sacramento voters. All registered voters in Sacramento County have received a vote-by-mail ballot with a prepaid first-class postage-return envelope. So if you have not received your ballot yet, you may need to register to vote, and you can do that online easily at registrtovote.ca.gov. There are three very safe and secure, reliable options for returning your ballot. You can put it in the mail. I would advise doing that early. No stamp is required, as I said, and be sure and sign the envelope on the outside and date it. You can also put your ballot in a drop box. All the locations for drop boxes are included with your ballot. And just noting that every county library and every Rayleigh's and every Bel-Air Market will have secure drop boxes for you to drop your ballot during their open hours between now and November 3rd, Election Day. If you would like to vote in person, you can do so beginning October 24th, and you can return your ballot as well to a vote center. Vote centers are completely full-service. They offer you voter registration, a replacement ballot should you spill coffee on your ballot, accessible voting machines, language assistance, and again, you can return your ballot at a vote center. So voting in person, you can do at a vote center. If you'd like to check your registration, you can do that at voterstatus.sos.ca.gov. And then if you'd like to track your ballot to make sure that it reaches the county registrar's office, you can do that at wheresmyballot.sos.ca.gov. Be sure and vote. Thank you.